We'll get going here. Some of you saw me from last week, some faces that I don't recognize, but I'm Sergeant Paul Radlin out of the St. Alden Barracks. I'm a patrol commander over there and I run one of the day shifts. Before here, for those who don't know, I was in St. Augie Wilson for 15 years before transferring up here to St. Alden. Lieutenant Parton, station commander, and he's been all over the place, really, Middlesex, Royalton, now here in St. Alden. What he's learned is that rural policing in Vermont is kind of the same no matter where you go. You have small towns, but they sometimes have big city issues, right? Some of the models that he's used to allow the towns to get back to the way they want to be is now we're trying to implement here in Richford, and that's through IDP. IDP, Intelligence Basicalan. It has some bullet points. Some of you are familiar with this, but these are very important bullet points that we have to stress to you and what keeps us driving towards the goal, okay? And the first one is create a safety, secure environment. All right, what does that mean? What does that mean to Richford versus what it means to Houndridge, what does it mean to Abbott, what does it mean to Montgomery? That means different to each person, each town. So you as folks that are invested here, that live here, have to determine what that means to you, okay, and how do we get there, all right? You want to promote lost community relationships, partnership of local state police, community leaders, and local organizations, all right? So very rarely do I introduce myself as Sergeant Paul Radlin. I come across as Sarge Radlin, right? But if we never break down that barrier of who I really am, who you really are, it's always going to be that kind of standoff between us, all right? So I think it's important that we establish these relationships between the town and our piece of the puzzle, and that you can have the confidence in us and we can have a good relationship back and forth. Does that make sense to everybody? If we don't do that, we're not going to get anywhere. Reduce drug activity and violence, that kind of goes hand in hand. We're seeing that when you have a small town like Richford and you have big city issues where drugs play a prominent role in that and then the violence comes with it, it can seem like an insurmountable problem to overcome because, again, it's a small town with a big city problem. Just hours ago, the Barracks, we had troopers still processing the evidence, but we got a very big case that just broke open. And we were doing this exact model, and we broke it open and we're working right now. So we had to leave that from here until it works. It does work, and results do happen, not instantaneously, but they happen. A savage positive effects of youth and parental programs. That's important. I ended last week's meeting on the sort of justice system, right? We talked about that. Because there was someone in here commenting on a person who has five felonies or who's been arrested 15 times is still causing problems in his neighborhood where he lives. Okay, so when I hear he's been arrested 15 times on one car, I'm saying, okay, so my troopers are working hard, they're making the arrests, okay? But then I look at what's the root of that problem, okay? They're causing a crime, they're getting arrested for what's the root of it? And we can go all the way back to developing good relationships and positive effective use of parental programs because if we have a good impact with our children, good programs that they can get part of, we hope they're less likely to become an offender where they get arrested or have a negative impact or bond forfeit. Okay, so it's important to us that we have these programs so that we can avoid them getting a criminal record early on if we can avoid it. So if they cause problems, they cause vandalism, if they get into a scuffle at school or in the street and they get charged with a misdemeanor, do we want to see them go through a judicial system where potentially they get hung with a record? And that kind of thing snowballs into lower chances of becoming employed somewhere, maybe less chances at school, so forth and so on, and we create this snowball effect early on from a misdemeanor effect, okay? So the sort of justice avoids just that. It gives a person an opportunity to own up to their responsibility for this. The community weighs in on it. They have, the community has an opportunity to weigh in on it, and so does the law enforcement. It doesn't end up with, say, a criminal record, okay? It ends up with them owning up to it, having a penalty for it, and then moving on. Unity efforts. If we're not allowed to push the boulder uphill, we're going to get run over by it, right? If we're not all going in the same direction, doing the same thing, we're not going to get anywhere. We're going to eat each other like a type of war, all right? So we all have to agree on what we're going to do. What that looks like from the Vermont State Police perspective is, we want you to tell us where we fit into your plan, okay? We don't want to come in and say, this is how you must do it because I don't know what the town of Richford means. I don't know what your needs are on a day-to-day basis. I know what my job is, okay, and I don't know what your needs are from the Vermont State Police beyond responding to a call that's clearly a cracked case and someone's fighting somebody, they're speeding, they're DUI, but what else? How can we work together, okay? And I'm hoping these meetings will come up with that, how we, through these conversations and through these meetings, you can let us know where our piece fits into this puzzle. And then generally intelligence from the community, okay? So this case we're just talking about earlier, the community members pay a huge, huge heart in that, okay? I told you before, somewhere, I think it's about the bridge area maybe, I don't know, it's like we drive over an invisible line and everybody in town knows we're here, and then that's it. Because I drive through with a big green and yellow car with lights on the top, I can make one pass through here, I can turn around to the bridge and come back through and everybody's gone, all right? It's just a tumbleweed going through the street. And we know that, all right? We know that. So if I can't catch somebody in my first pass through, the chance of me catching someone doing something wrong becomes less and less, all right? So information to the community is important to us, all right? So from this, we started talking last week about what does a safe and secure community look like to you, and you had mentioned that you want to be able to have your kids play outside without concern, you'll be able to walk the street, you want to be able to walk down the store and not worry about something happening to you, okay? You mentioned women's specificity last week, right?
Yeah, and also you worry about your vehicle, leaving your vehicle.
Yep.
You know, you've got to make sure that it's locked and then hope that nothing was broken when you get back.
Sure.
You're just, you're trying to get one step ahead of the people that you know want to get your stuff so that they can sell it to buy booze or drugs or whatever.
Sure.
Because that's what they're making it out for.
Yep.
Watching us.
Right. And we want that, we want to be able to be safe and secure in our own community by having that. We mentioned, and Andy wrote some of this stuff down, be able to walk from point A to point B without worrying about being some sort of assaulted or something like that, right? That was what we said. And then being able to walk safe at night. We talked about when we're younger, when the lights came on and then we had to come home, right? But now we're worried about that. We don't even like to get that far. So some of the roots of that, we came about with being high turnover in the town, okay? We started out with a big brush, okay? We labeled it really big and lied at first, and then we realized it was more of a pointed issue as high turnover in the town. Most people are less invested than the busy folks that live here on a long-term basis. So what do we, what can we do to try to get those folks invested or hold those folks that are not so invested more accountable? And a comment came up about property owners that are renting these properties and how we can hold them accountable and can the town, or can there be, you know, the town manager, town, what's your official title, Andy?
Select order.
Select order member, can they, can they hold landowners responsible for the folks that they have rented? Can they hold, then the landlord can have the renter responsible? So then there's responsibility all around, right? And not just left willy-nilly. All right, so you had mentioned, I know earlier, Andy, you had called up and talked with Lieutenant Parton about some community events that may be helping that. Is that something you want to speak on?
Sure, yeah. I think it probably, well, first of all, I just want to let everyone know from the last meeting, I took some general minutes or whatever, and we put a copy of them back there. Kylie has created like a masked email type of thing, so if anyone wants them, we'd rather just send them an email. So we put a signup sheet back there.
Perfect.
If everyone could just write their email down.
Yep.
Kylie will plug all of them into the computer, put like, you know, IDP meeting group or whatever, and just keep adding to it.
Yep.
So if we have any information or anything we want to send, we'll just send it that way.
Great.
Versus having to print copies and, you know. I just thought if everyone could at least read them, we would recap from the meeting before quickly so that we're not wasting 20, 30 minutes talking about what we already talked about.
Of course, yeah, makes complete sense.
Yeah, so the last meeting, I think probably the biggest question Mike Heeman had asked it, he's like, you know, it feels like we're beating a dead horse, what are we going to, let's do something.
Yep.
And for me, I think that's what we need to do. We need to figure something out. And a couple of times we discussed that possible weekend down at the fire station where the fire crew is going to be doing, they have a weekend planned, Saturday, Sunday, doing something, you know, for some training.
Yep.
They're going to be cutting some cars. I don't know, our window is getting pretty short, winter's coming, so.
Yeah, it is.
I thought about, you know, maybe try to advertise it as like a fall harvest, you know, something along those lines, so it's not like, oh, it's a police meeting, we're not going to that, you know?
Right.
But if we could make it a community event, but have the police involved, have the fire department involved, invite the sheriffs, invite the border patrol. I don't know, we tossed around some ideas, maybe like a hayride, if we could find somebody with a tractor or a wagon.
Yep.
Something that we used to do here, it's probably been 10, 12, 14 years since we've done it, but the other thing we thought of was, you know, could we buy 50 or 75 pumpkins and have kids carry pumpkins? Food, I know Mike and Tracy Heeman had offered to help, you know, cook or food, hamburgers, hot dogs. I just think we need to focus on trying to plan towards something.
Yes.
Me and Kylie looked today at the budget, and I mean, the town could maybe contribute like 500 bucks or something towards it. I don't think that would be enough, but if, you know, if we could get some donations. My mom had talked to maybe the Legion, they offered maybe to make a small donation. I know Lions Club generally will donate some money, I think, Andy, are you part of Lions Club or is that?
Yeah, I am, my father is.
You know, there's other businesses around that, you know, if we went and talked to business owners, maybe 50 or 100 bucks if they donated. I don't think it costs a lot of money, but you know, if you bought 75 pumpkins at, you know, $5 apiece or whatever, that's, you know, that's 500 bucks.
So is the town set up with some sort of like 503, like tax deductible type situation where if someone, if they wanted to donate something, it would be kind of incentive as a, as a write-off too? Is it town set up in that way though?
Kylie?
I don't know, I will look into that. I'm sure we can give them a letter saying that they donate.
Something like there's an incentive maybe, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it would cost a ton of money, but I mean, it's, we've got to do something to try to get things going, and I think it's a good promotion thing for the fire department.
Yep.
For the ambulance, I could have, you know, five, six of the ambulance crew try to be there. I don't know, we're just, we're kind of running out of time, and I agree with Mike that, you know, we've had five or six meetings, we've had a great session, we all know what everyone thinks is wrong and, but it's not going to fix itself.
You know, and Andy, that's, this is great for this group at this point. That's how these, that's how these take shape, okay? Is that we understand with us coming up here and wanting this to take shape that we're going to take some of the stuff that we've been taking, right? We know that, like people are upset about the way things are, and we understand that. And we're hoping that through us learning from you folks that live here, and then you also learning from us, a back and forth conversation on where everybody is, right? And you talked about, I could come in here with a book of citations and walk out with 15 arrests, but what does that really do at the end of the day? And can we arrest and write our tickets out of this way? It's a piece, but it's not the answer. So how does that work? And this group right now, you are right now on that huge turning point, and that's what we're looking for right there, that's great.
I just feel like if we as a group, which this group keeps getting smaller, which I don't like that, but it is what it is. If we as a group in the community can show that, hey, we're trying, we're going to do our part, we're going to, we'll give it 110%, we want 110% back from the law enforcement.
Yep.
You know, like, I feel there's happy medium there. We have to find, I get it, you can't come in here and write 800 tickets and think that's going to solve Richford's problem, and our problems are all going to leave just because you give them a ticket. I get that.
Yep.
But on the other hand, I feel like some of these people believe they're getting away with murder, and if we don't tell them, you can't do that anymore, they're just going to keep doing it and doing it and doing it because they feel like they're lost.
Yeah, yeah. Okay? Be offended if I took this off?
No.
All right, so, you know, social distancing here. So this, we've seen this in the past meetings in other towns where you'll have, you know, people will come in and then they're looking for the answer, they're looking for the easy button, you know? They're waiting for the SP to say, we're going to solve all your problems, we're going to bring in all these resources, and poof, magically it's going to be fixed. And then once those, you know, those groups, those people will see that that's not what's going to happen, it's actually going to take a little work, then they start dropping off. But then, something great starts happening is that you'll start attracting a different crowd. People who are willing to put the work in, they're like, oh, I could do that, oh, I can do that. You know, it's that back to that SARA model. We started identifying stakeholders and then, you know, like Bob, Bob's here now, Bob's starting to come regularly, and now he's a guy who's like, hey, now I know this is going to take some effort. So don't just get discouraged about the number you're doing, because it'll pick back up again once we start those things. And the last thing that I have, are you looking at, getting short on time, Andrew, about October 10th? So you're going to get some like subcommittee or something where you can get some people where, you know, that subcommittee doesn't have to do all the work, but the planning of it, and then you start, you know, piecemealing things out and get other people involved, and that's how the whole thing works. So have you thought about that or?
Yeah, I have. I did know if, I don't want to come here and say, hey, we're going to do something down there, if you guys don't like it, you know what I mean? But I wouldn't say, hey, if we're, if we are going to do that, or if everyone thinks maybe that's a good turning point, then that's probably what I think our meeting should be about tonight is, let's plan it, let's figure it out, let's, you know, I don't want to be, I only want to do it, you know?
Yeah, so you mentioned the 10th, is the 10th a good day to Saturday?
Well, the reason why we picked that day is because Indy, they already have twins that weekend.
The fire department.
The fire department, and it just kind of, kind of makes sense that, hey, they're going to be cutting tires open and they're, you know, it's more of a training session for them, so.
Piggyback onto it.
Yeah, I mean, it, I think.
The folks here, who came in and attended this meeting before? Okay, so we did this last week, but I just wanted to see who did.
I didn't hear what your question was.
Last week, if you were here last week or before, if you had your meeting before, okay? So all you folks have a vested interest in this actually becoming a successful program here, okay? Who here thinks that on October 10th, we can piggyback onto the fire department sort of cut-up session and have some sort of community get together? Okay, what are some of the naysayers? What do you think? October, is that not a good idea? What do you think?
I think it's a good idea, I don't know if that's enough time to get that done.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how big of an event we're trying to.
Well, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a wall of balloons for that for now, right? But next, next year's bigger, next year's bigger, next year's bigger, okay?
Years ago, we used to do it at the, well, it's a jolly store now, we're at Calvar. It used to be the Pinnacle Peddler, and I was young, but I mean, I remember going to it as a kid and.
The harvest fest.
There was a lot of people that went to it, I mean, there was.
See, some of the best times that we had, the underhill, underhill Gertrudis Harvest Fest down on 15, okay, that's like a, they set up Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, they have food, they have trash, they have all that stuff. And that, people are talking about that. First off, we're getting, we're getting requests to help with traffic and security in like June and May. They're like, hey, we're doing this on this weekend. They're locked into their dates, but not the first year they ever did it, right? They started out small, they get bigger and bigger and bigger, okay? So the memory that you just brought up is what we want to bring back. We want the kids now to be like, oh, I remember I used to go down there and the fire department cut cars up and we did this, we did this. The same memory you had about down here, we want to bring that back. So we have to start, and I know what you're saying, we're getting short on time, so then all we're going to do at that point is just limit the size of it. So we're going to limit to, maybe someone's cooking burgers and dogs, fire department's out there, call the rescue guys and all them, get the word out to all the law enforcement and, you know.
I just, something to it, I mean, for kids, like, I mean, not, I feel like 75% of this is we're focusing on the next generation of kids.
Absolutely.
And I just thought like, I don't know, hayride doesn't cost anything.
Sure.
We have all kinds of tractors with tractors.
Absolutely.
The town has a whole shed full of mulch hay. I mean, it wouldn't take a lot to put that together.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, you know, someone saying, yeah, I donate my tractor, my pine and my wagon.
Okay.
And then like pumpkin tireing, I mean, it's fall, right? I mean, kids, I've never met a kid that didn't want a car of pumpkin or, you know, and some kids, their parents probably don't take the money to go buy them a $5 pumpkin, so they don't get the car of pumpkin.
Okay. So I think we limit the size of it so we can try to make the 10th a viable day, right? So we start getting into mid-October, end of October, it could be snowing, it's dark by 3:30, okay? So if we want to choose the 10th, let's make, let's make, okay, let's take the 10th. The 10th?
I'm game.
10th?
I, well, is it, Andy, I think you wanted to go Sunday, right? On Saturday, I haven't looked at the calendar, but.
Saturday, we're going to, most of the days would be in class.
Yeah, so Sunday would be a special.
So you'll let it? You guys, so you're getting fire department?
Yeah.
So you're cutting off cars on the 11th?
Yes, we are.
The 11th work for you?
Works for me.
Anyone else? Lemon? Okay? So now we're going to go back to the huge, the huge problem we had to do in the last week was who's going to make the signs, all right? So now we've got to get on to the, how are we going to get this word out? The email, Facebook page, signage, okay? You've got to start pressing this thing, and you also need to come up with, I went to some volunteers here, maybe start talking about who can I talk to about getting a tractor, who can I talk to about getting donations of?
I'll take care of the tractor portion of it only because I just, I just want to make sure that safety is.
That it runs?
Well, yeah, I want to, I want to just make sure.
That's fine, no, that's good.
If that's town.
That's good, okay.
Promoted, I want to make sure that, and the pumpkins and that stuff, I mean, I just, I'll volunteer to do that portion of it. I think we need someone to volunteer for the food portion of it as far as, I don't like it, Tracy, they told us at the last meeting that they wouldn't be here or at the next one.
Okay.
But we could call them, they wanted to be involved in it for.
Sure. I think those two are golden for what we're trying to accomplish here.
And I think the other thing, I lost my train of thought, it'll come back, but.
Okay.
There was one other thing, oh, the part of like donations, like.
Okay.
If people could kind of say, well, I'll go talk to this business owner, I'll go talk to that business owner, and then I think somehow they would have to work with the town clerk on how that money could be, you know, I don't, I don't know how that works as far as writing a, you know, like a $100 check or a $50 check or.
What do you need money for if you're getting the pumpkins and what are you buying or?
I'm not going to buy the pumpkins, they're $5 apiece if there's, if there's 75 pumpkins and that's, that's going to cost a fair amount of money.
Okay.
The food?
The food.
Hamburgers, hot dogs.
So you're doing like a barbecue thing or that's what you're envisioning?
Well, that's what we were talking about at the last meeting. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying that we have to do this, I'm just saying, at the last meeting we talked about doing food, correct?
I think, I think as a group, you guys should determine how you want.
What's the scope of what we're doing?
What do you want, what do you want to accomplish in this, in this first town festival? And how big do you want, how big do you want? Sir, you got a question?
Okay. Oh, why can't we just get some flyers printed up and pass them out in the stores and onto some of the poles in town and just get around, you know? We're all, we create more problems than we solve, you know? And I think we just, you know, we need to get together. You guys are making good points, very good, okay? But we can make some flyers, sell them out, and if this is all we're going to get at the meeting, it's ridiculous. Everybody's got kids that they want, and we want them to be good adults, we want them to do this, we want them to do that, but we can't get them out of their damn houses to come to a meeting for their kids? And some of us don't even have kids.
Sure.
But we're here, you know? And I think if we get some flyers and print up enough of them, I'll take a handful and pass them out, you know? But we need to do some action, we need some action. Because all we've been doing, I came here the week before last and we talked.
Yep.
We need action, we need to do something.
I agree.
That's what I feel.
Amy created a Facebook page too for this group, so she was just telling me, I don't have Facebook, but a lot of people are sharing it and looking at it and seeing it, so if an ad could be put on there, I think the word would definitely get out there for sure. I mean, maybe we could do something at the school, we could put, you know, like go up and see Beth and then go, I don't know the elementary school teacher, but give them a flyer and give it to every kid to take home, you know?
Yeah, I agree, and that's what I feel, this, this, this right here is pivotal. If you don't recognize it, this is pivotal, what this Sharman is saying right now, you are now taking this action, okay? We talked about it, we talked about it, we got it off our chest, we've been able to involve others, we all know it's all on the table now. And now, this is, this is a big moment right now for this, this group of folks now. Yes, it's not a huge number of folks, not even a fraction of the representation of the town, we're not getting them here, but if we continue with decisions that are made here, hey, we're going to host a town festival, okay? We're doing positive things. We can't have outliers out there and all of them saying, well, nothing's being done, the town's just dead, we're not doing it. Things are being done, and it's going to start with a small group like this and make these decisions. And pretty soon you're going to have two or three more people in here, four, five, six, seven ways, start seeing some positive change that is happening, like the town festival. So, yeah. Hey, there's a question about that, yes.
This is just a suggestion, Andy, because years ago I was heavily involved with the Harvest Festival, and we, Linda and I were in charge too of the hayride. And my suggestion is you put an assigned adult on that wagon.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Seated and whatever, and then at night we used to have a big bonfire and.
Up at Roger's Doghouse, right?
We used to have it down in Davis Park.
Yeah.
And they used to do it one time, like, used to go up to Roger's old sugar house up there, yeah.
Yeah, but that's no longer a thing, but that may be there, but we did it right down in Davis Park and we just, everybody had, we had hot chocolate and I think it was chilly when we had that.
And we have chili.
And then we also did a car rally, which can be something to think of next year, which raised all the money for the Harvest Festival to bring in these jumping houses and whatever for the kids and.
I think, I think our problem is this year we're.
We're on time. We're going to figure, we're going to, we're going to limit the scope this year, okay? But we're going to, we need to plant the flag.
So, well, we come up with the no kidding events.
What?
Right now, and then.
Start with the.
And then what?
Start with the.
Yeah, start with the problem, go down. What do we want to call it?
What was it used to be called? Was this the Harvest Festival, right? Did they have like a big dance or?
The reason, the reason a lot of it got halted was because we were told by a town official that it was Richford's Harvest Festival, and that was a liability for the town of Richford.
Okay, so.
So we'll take it, Richford, not Richmond, right?
Call it a community Harvest Festival.
There you go.
Or just the Harvest Festival. Maybe you don't have to put it in, maybe just get the Harvest Festival. Or just the harvest festival, maybe you don't have to put it in, maybe just get the harvest festival.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, that's.
So that's why a lot of things came to help because of that.
I think you need to keep it to like maybe just hot dogs and Hillary said something about popcorn.
Yeah.
Um, not have a lot because your time is running out, you're aiming ever gonna do something down here. It's not that hard to cook hot dogs. Um, at least get that started, get that going to maybe just limit down to food. And you don't need a whole lot of donations, you're probably not gonna get a lot. And, and, um, to like Bob said, get your flyers made up, put them in kids' backpacks at school. You'll be surprised how, where it was.
Yeah, if I get a flyer, if we can get a flyer, I can hand it out to the school.
You can?
No, they will, yeah.
Okay, so we're, sir?
I'm not saying it'll happen this year or it could happen this year. Uh, the way the fire department, when we do breakfast with Santa Claus, we get around the liabilities, we bring the Lions Club in on it. They cover it under their insurance, so if something happens, it falls under Lions International, which is a good thing. Just a suggestion, you might want to involve or invite some of the clubs that are in town here to get involved with this. Cause there's very, a lot of good members, very good members that would be willing to help out.
Yeah, I think so for sure, especially the Lions Club.
Lions Club actually been looking for members, um, anyone wanting to step up, they're age now. I'm probably the, one of the youngest on Lions Club, so.
Back in the ball, the team, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Legion, uh, Billy, all of us.
Yep.
Yeah.
But, so there's a problem with that.
There's a lot of different groups, you know, like even, uh, React, you know, that's a, there's a ton of people that are involved in React there. I mean, that's their whole goal is to change Richard.
Okay.
Let me ask a quick question here. It sounds like we're starting to, you know, get some, uh, cooking going here, that's, that's good. Show of hands, who's willing just to make one phone call to help out? Oh, okay, good. Alright, let's keep cooking.
Good, so, alright, so we got, are you writing this down, Andy, or are you writing this down, Andy?
Probably both are.
I'm trying to write down what I'm talking to, so it's.
Right, yeah, I got it.
I think we need to nail down a name. We got the date, we need a hundred percent name.
Name, what's the name?
They're, they're gonna advertise it, so we need to have.
Harvest Festival.
Name, Harvest Festival, done, easy enough, next. What are we gonna, what are we gonna have there for, we're already gonna have the firefighters, everybody loves firefighters. So that, 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 the entertainment park's good, right? What else?
I'm gonna make sure that I have, um, some of the ambulance crew there.
Okay.
Um, not all of them.
You're gonna send an invitation out to law enforcement community, right?
Um, I, we're gonna have to send an invitation to the sheriff's department and, um, you guys have been involved with the board patrol more than I've, you invited them the first time, right? I did.
Yeah.
Well, we can go there and do it too.
Yeah.
We can, one of us can stop in and, and talk to them, like we can call Steve or somebody, one of the guys.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take care of that. And we probably should get a, maybe I've, I've been hitting the head a lot, cause you guys know. A no kidding list of what you guys are finalizing, what it is, not big, small, what it is you guys are gonna do. I know you guys are doing a hayride for one.
Food.
Food?
Yeah. Pumpkins.
Pumpkins?
Pumpkin carving for the kids, hayride.
Yep, hayride and, and then, um, hot chocolate with a bonfire, is that it? Could, could, could call that?
You can do hot dog, real, definitely hot dog and bonfire.
What are we doing, are we gonna do, you remember the?
Hot chocolate, coffee and cookies. I mean, we get some of the, carry good bakers, the back row, I'll say, I remember one of them.
We're, we're, is bonfire something you can do at the end of the night or no? Um, I mean, we might not have too much to do this time.
I'm not saying that we can't, but I think we have to find a place to do that.
Who knows somebody with land that can hold a bonfire?
The last couple of years, hasn't that high school done one up, up the, behind the high school, or the top, like the, I don't know if they called it.
Who wants to call and see if that's what they did?
It was, it was in October, it was during soccer season.
Yeah, well, you can call that.
I, was that, was that, maybe, maybe they'd pour and make the same tape.
Someone wanna make that full salt?
I think they'll back and find out.
Check it, you are, you are checking with us?
Sure.
We've got a playground.
Yeah.
You know, we can make use of the playground.
We sure do.
Okay.
Was there a reason we can't do it at Davis Park? Just curious. If that's where it was done before.
Yeah, they had, they had big, um, big tr, like troughs that they put the wood in, so it would, it would be contained. And they just make a fire in there and serve hot chocolate.
Depends what time you know.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Is it Sunday night, is it Sunday night or is there gonna be a lot of people?
Yeah, would do that, both of the events? And if they're gonna do the car cutting.
Everyone's looking at me.
I gave, I gave you the pet, it's a power of the sword, you know? So what do you think, is it too much?
Yeah, what's I'm throwing it up?
Yeah, cause if they're cutting a car down here, a lot of people, if they've got kids that are gonna be down here.
Yeah.
They're not gonna wanna go somewhere else, so.
Okay.
I know before the historical society used to have stuff right out front, like popcorn and stuff, so maybe you can combine.
Well, maybe you've got some of it backwards. Maybe you should do the bonfire nighttime stuff on Saturday night and do your hot dog stuff Sunday when they're doing their car cutting.
Or, or are we, are we outside our scope for our first time?
I think, I, I feel like the bonfire might be pushing for the first year.
Are we ready? Bonfire two up the ship? Okay, fix, man, what?
I agree.
You agree? Okay, no bonfire, easy enough.
Um, I don't, no, Andy just left on the call, Shelby, do you know what time that's supposed to start?
We're running it from eight to four on Sunday.
So around that clock we could have hot dogs.
No, I don't, I, I think though he had said that they didn't think they would be cutting the tires until later in the day, but I feel like I remember him saying that.
Or they just get out the names?
Yeah, like started doing maybe, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so that, that's easy enough, you can, we'll, we'll figure out with him when they start cutting cars and you can, you can, uh, make your time up at that point. So we're gonna do the, the Harvest Festival, that's what we're calling it. Hot dogs, cutting up a car, fire department, law enforcement invite.
I think we need to.
EMS invite.
We need some people to volunteer on the food, like someone nailed down the food part of it.
Okay.
I know I can get popcorn machine, if that's what we wanna do. So we can do hot dogs, popcorn, hot chocolate and cookies?
That'd be good.
I'm pretty sure. And leave it just like that?
Did, did you say hot chocolate?
Yeah.
Okay, make sure.
But you gotta realize, if you're gonna do carving pumpkins, you gotta have enough area where there's tables for the kids to sit at and do pumpkins.
Painting be better? Painting, pumpkin?
Yeah, absolutely. Painting sounds dangerous.
Do you think that'd be easier?
Maybe set a simpler one.
Painting'd be less dangerous.
Can you, okay?
Yep, I like that.
Okay.
Cause I was actually, I was trying to think of that today, I'm like, how can you?
Ninety-seventy-five, nine, you're talking about screaming.
I, I looked on him, was I like buy like a little kit to like a little safe, little knife for a kid, but.
Yeah, okay. Alright, good, this is good, alright, the doctor, the painting is not hurting, it's awesome.
I bet Hartman's would donate camphor.
Gonna be a pumpkin first, cause I think they're going fast.
I can contact, cause I know for PTO, we got a bunch for our home tours from, um, Hartman's.
Okay, so you.
To greenhouses.
You do one of them? Perfect.
Yeah.
I went to, um, uh, Burlington this afternoon and I, there's, everybody's selling pumpkins and the cheapest one I saw was five dollars. They had a selling five dollar pumpkins, I was like almost in the same all winter, the little road on the left.
Yeah. Well, you don't, you don't need to be giant pumpkins, right? They gotta care, the kids gotta care enough, so like these little things like this, the tiny little pumpkins, put a little face on them. Right, so we, we don't need huge pumpkins, so that's.
How many pumpkins do you think, I mean, well, I don't know.
You said seventy-five, right? If you go with seventy-five, I think that's gonna be enough.
It seems like a lot of pumpkins, but I mean.
If you have extra, you put them on the step of the town.
Right.
Right?
What if you don't have enough?
Gonna be going here.
Brother insists to one cake, one side, one thing.
Yeah, well, listen, and if, limited pumpkins while they last, you know, let, let, don't let anybody be, don't let them come surprised. And then now you're the bad guy, cause it ran out. Put it on there. You know, pumpkin painting, come on down, bring your children. Limited supplies, get there while you can type thing, so it puts kind of the onus on the people to get down there, right? Don't worry, you're still gonna, you're still gonna take some heat, it's not out, that doesn't matter, but try to lessen the heat, right? Sir?
Why can't, um, you know, we're talking about hot dogs and stuff, right?
Okay.
Why can't we, uh, some of us in here and maybe some more, bring down a couple riddles? And just set them down there and cook them.
We have a way to cook them, we have a good way to cook them.
Well, we gotta do that.
I think we have.
Yeah, we're gonna have a good one.
We have to cook them, so how big of a grill we had to cook them, it sounds worth the hot dogs.
Yeah, I think it does.
I think you're gonna have to do is you've got children under a certain age, they should be accompanied by an adult and they need masks.
Oh, yeah, the COVID restrictions don't go away, because we're getting, get a mask, but we still, we still are dialed by the COVID restrictions, right? You know, people within their family, you must wear a mask, six foot distancing, you know, for frame, for maybe. Maybe have some antihistinizer here and there around that you can use, right? COVID, COVID's been a whole angle for this, and this is what, you know, this is what has limited us already, this is why we started this way back when. And then all of a sudden it went away for a while because we were restricted, we couldn't have the gathering, right? Now we can, now we're trying to pick it back up, so you're right, COVID is important.
Supplies, what we need for?
So we need plates, napkins, ketchup, mustard, that type of stuff, is that gonna go with the food? Or is that gonna be a separate thing altogether?
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I want, I need, I need to hear it now, I'm kind of a weird guy.
Okay.
So are we getting, are we getting, is the food person getting hot dogs, gonna get the ketchup too?
I got a list, I got a list going, so we'll all get together and.
Okay, perfect.
Might be easier if we can order something like the little packets.
It don't have to be in packets. So. You can't use the.
You can't crunch it, yeah, it's a whole. So it's gotta be a little packet deal, so yes, good point, okay? So Harvest Festival, we're kicking it off. What else?
Time frame.
I'm tired of names, but.
Like the timeframe, like during this, twelve to. Yeah, twelve to four or, or ten to four, how much when they're gonna be doing.
Let React know about this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is great, this is, this, this right here.
Can anybody think of any other clubs besides got React, Lions Club?
Not.
Yeah, that's a good one.
No.
React or not, because you're.
No, um, I just to let people know about it, I guess, um, and then I still think, I mean, it's gonna cost money, we have to, we gotta go look for donations.
Okay.
My mom already talked to the Legion, they said they donate fifty dollars.
Okay.
Me and Charlie, we did our budget, we donate five hundred from the town.
Okay.
The church group might help, the ladies auxiliary, cause Ginger's, but we take care of that too.
Okay, and I, and I think, um, I think we should somehow, I mean, it's kind of hard to go ask someone for money, you know what I mean, and the, but somehow you gotta let, you gotta at least let people know that it's appreciated. And I don't know if we just make some signs and say, you know, thanks for the donations and list of, you know, the businesses or the people that might have donated money.
Okay, so I just did some math on my calculator, seventy-five pumpkins, three hundred and seventy-five bucks. Okay? I do have a calculator.
I guess.
Sorry, I teach math, I'm.
Yeah.
So this is math, this was by the five, right?
So I, I'm thinking just for the pumpkins alone, I, I go buy paint, little paint brushes, the pumpkins, I'll have five hundred in that. You're gonna have five hundred in food, you're gonna have, well, that's about it, but, so we're talking like a thousand dollars. I think.
But Andy, you can also ask, you don't have to ask for money, you can say, "Hey, Weatherby's, can you donate a couple boxes of hot dogs?"
Right.
You know, Vista, can you donate some hot dog buns?
Yep. So if we have a bunch of a grand, let's try to get it closer to five hundred, right, through those donations.
Okay, when, um, I ran a basketball camp, we had a coin drop out here with the kids.
Yeah.
Okay, and some of those standing out there.
Yeah.
And we got quite a bit of money, you know, and the kids were actually doing the work, you know? They, they were standing out there and they were laughing and talking, but people see kids, they give kids.
Yeah.
You know, and that would not hurt. And also, if we put out a flyer, why don't we just get a can, a, a, get some cans or something and send it with the flyer? And ask for donations instead of being proud, we can't be proud, if we're gonna take the town back, we've gotta take the town. And we gotta step, take the step forward, if it's a little brutal, so be it, but that's the way we're gonna get it done. And you know, if we put the flyer out, put the can out, they can put money in can, if we get a hundred dollars, fine, that's a hundred more than what we had.
Right, I like, I like, I like the energy in this guy right here, perfect. So what we got, what we got for flyers, who's making flyers?
I can make flyers.
Andy, thank you. We got, that's a whole flyer, we're gonna hand it out, put them up around town.
And you can get one to me and I'll give it to you.
Can, um, Andy advise, make the flyer, can we make copies here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
I'll just email you.
What else? What are we missing, anybody? What do you think? What are we missing?
What's the draw?
Pardon me?
What's the main draw? The kids, parents to come, what are we gonna say?
What do we wanna say? What do we want our message to be from our first festival that we've had in Long Island here? What, what do we want our message to be?
I think it needs to be something about bringing back our community. Right. You know, it's like, just a gathering of just people that are here.
Okay.
Rooting.
Needs to grow.
Exactly.
Is everybody here, is everybody here to attend the, the festival?
I don't know.
Yeah, me?
I don't know.
You know?
Sunday's early, it's Saturday for me.
Okay. Anybody here that's gonna attend the festival, you're gonna talk about these meetings there? Right? Hey, listen, this is what we're gonna do, thank you, sir.
I will come up with it.
That's right, the cards and the little, um, I don't think I grabbed any off the desk, I think. The cards and the, and the things, right? Are you gonna talk about this meeting?
Yeah.
They're reading it on their email, they're reading it on their Facebook, okay? But when we're talking to them and getting the, the, the passion that we're seeing here, saying, "Listen, this is what we're trying, these are real people trying to do real things in the town that we want to be a certain way." We want to be able to walk down the street at night, we want to be able to, if I forget to lock my car, realize that everything's gonna be in there in the morning when I walk out there. Okay, that's the feeling we want to have in our town. But if, if you read it on a screen or read it on a social media site, it doesn't give you the same feeling as if I have someone as passionate as us that's sitting in here right now saying, "Here now, we've developed a, for our festival, we haven't had, we didn't have this last week," okay? This is pivotal tonight, folks. Alright, this is it, this is the turning point we're taking, we're gonna keep momentum, it's not gonna be without work, we can't sit back and out. Okay, and from that we figure out how, you're gonna host the festival. We have a trooper available, we're gonna send a trooper to that, that's the law enforcement angle that we're gonna put on this, right? I have a trooper that's not tied up with a case and they're, they have peace patrol and they're free, hey, listen, they're having a festival, you're gonna get the car out there. Alright? And that's, that's how the law enforcement fits into your plan this time. The next plan, we'll figure out how we fit into that one. Okay, that's how this is gonna work, it's gonna be a cohesive, same direction, same effort. That makes sense, everybody? My off face or just talking silly?
I know, I remember that, I think it was the first time we had talked about this. I don't remember, cause we weren't speaking in minutes or anything then, but someone had mentioned, um, like even having like the town, uh, like the town road through with some of the town workers be there. Does anyone remember that?
Yeah, I think it was just a way of just involving everybody.
Yeah.
Because not everybody in town even know who these people are.
Sure, sure, yeah, absolutely.
I just, I don't know if that's, I don't, I just, I'm bringing it up, cause I remember somebody had talked about it.
No, it's, and like the started saying is that, you know, now, you know, we, we, you came in, you said, "Hey, here we are, this is what we are doing." And then, right, you guys are like, "Yeah, yeah, blah, blah, blah," and all this and everything else, right? And then now you can see how we're kind of shifting gears, you know, action, we gotta make things happen. Okay, so get out there, identify the stakeholders, like with this, right? The churches, we, we can identify people, we can make those phone calls, but what about this? And just take somebody, now that you guys are coming in, we're asking you to take action, like Bob said. Take action, take the steps to take back your town. It's not just gonna be the Harvest Festival, it's gonna be a lot of things down the road. We're in for this, for the long haul. We hope you are too. Cause we can come here, we can teach you how to fish. Okay? But we can't be here fishing for you. Does that make sense? We're providing the arena. Okay, we're coming in, we, we're saying we can't be the answer. Together, collectively, we can be the answer, okay? So, like when we do these things, they're like, okay, what can I do? You guys are coming to these meetings, I'm not trying to scare you, okay, but what can I do? I can make a phone call. It's easy, I just pick up the phone, I can call whoever, hey, can you donate some hot dogs? No? Okay, thanks, all right. Call them, hey, I know you're in Eastburg, but we're having this thing, you know, can you donate some hot dogs? Well, yeah, what you guys, for a good cause, yes, for this cause. Well, heck yeah, right, Bob, that happens, doesn't it? Damn straight.
Can you cut that out?
But, you know, it's these things where you guys are gonna have to start taking action, okay, instead of just talking about it. Right?
Yeah, that's it. Ma'am?
Well, two thoughts, because we've been buying or purchasing so many pumpkins at one time, maybe you could strike a deal where you, you know, you pay for fifty and then they donate twenty-five or something? That's a dismount-
I think carpings would-
And the other thing-
Something like that.
The other thing that I wanted to say was, you know, when I was a little girl, and you saw a policeman in a uniform, you knew, your parents always told you if you were lost, you were afraid or whatever, go to a policeman in a uniform. And it seems like in today's society, the kids don't go to the, you know, people see them in Richard, and like you said, they, they go away. And I think it's wonderful that we could be having an event where the children of Richard could see you guys in a whole different, a whole different way, you know, and happy time, and important time.
Yeah, because you guys said to me about, parents tell, telling their children, I'm gonna call the cops, you know, eat your beans, right?
Yeah.
So now, I'm, I'm a bad guy, it comes up and makes me eat their beans.
Yeah.
So, but, saying, look, that's the story I told last week, sitting in the parking lot, and the two boys that are going fishing, and we talked about fishing for a while, what they're gonna do, how they're gonna catch it, what bait they use, and so forth and so on. Absolutely.
That's gonna make a good happen.
I, I agree, right. And if we can get to that younger group, the age group, we avoid the long-term effects of possibly causing them, uh, climate error on the road, they had positive influences like early on in their life. Not saying it's just the police, I'm just saying in general, we create the community, creates them a safe and secure environment, so children can grow up and be safe and secure, and I had people like Andy tell them stories about his memories, and this and that, and the stories about the farm, about the farmers market, and the bonfire, all these things coming back. I would hate to think that fifteen years from now, we don't have a known group of people in here saying, well, I never did any of that, you know, that would be, that would be terrible. To, to lose an opportunity, and it's gonna be tough, right? It almost seems like we're starting from scratch. But it takes tenacious, we have to be tenacious, we can't be frustrated by seeing a less number, right, it's only gonna start with twenty or so folks. And then they see the market, and then they see whatever the next event is. Maybe we have something in here, there's a craft fair, or pie contest, or something in the winter, a couple months, something, we, you know, hey, get together, this is the next phase of of that, the winter festival.
And realistically, your fir-, our, our first year is gonna be the Harvest year, because
Of course.
we're starting with no planning, but
Yep.
right now, if, if, if we do this, and hey, everyone thinks it was fun and it was a good thing, well, next July, we can be planning for the Harvest back.
Actually, that's exactly what you're doing, yeah, it gives you time, and then when the Harvest Fest is going on, you're planning for something at Christmas time. Yeah.
And when, you know, at Christmas time, you're planning for something in the spring, and you just keep-
You've got it going, Andy, that's exactly-
It's like, it's going on like three months ahead of it, unfortunately, we're, we're like two weeks ahead of it, so.
This time it is, so that's why we're keeping a stone where it stays, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine, planting that seed, okay, and at this, at this little thing down here, if fifty people show up, you can't walk around with your heads hanging down, saying only fifty people showed up, and I bought seventy-five pumpkins, okay? Those are fifty people that aren't in this room, okay? Have that conversation with them. Then hopefully, the next meeting, there's thirty people in here. Then you have something in here in the wintertime, or somewhere else, right? Hey, come on down, we made an ice skating rink in the parking lot somewhere, some field somewhere, ice skating all winter, right, something that we're keeping this beauty together, that they have something looking forward to, and all of a sudden, there's, not all of a sudden, there's pride. Right? Because the town's building something, people are having pride in their town, and then you have someone that comes in and starts getting sideways, and you have what we talked about early on. When I was a kid, if I was over at my friend's house, and I got out of line, my friend's dad took care of it, right? My mom would expect that. I don't know if that happens today. Right? But that's what we get back to, you weren't there to step out, I didn't dare to step out of line, or you, but you get to that point where the town takes care of the children, and they take, build us that little thing, right, they're gonna take care of themselves, and then we have respect in the town, we have all that type, and then the folks that are causing the mischief, the temporary residents and all that, they're outnumbered so much. Um, it's a lot easier to manage that group. Anything else? Sir, I love it when you put your hand down, it's great.
You know, we all, everybody in this room has great memories of being a child, okay? Is this not what we wanna give to our kids, so they can have great memories, but without this hassle that we're going through now?
Sure.
Isn't that what we want?
Absolutely.
We want our kids to be able to sit back, like, people say, well, I remember going to the park, I remember going here, we had bonfire, we had this, we had that. Those are memories that we need to enforce on our kids in this town. And let them have something, so twenty years from now, when they're sitting in a meeting, they could say, well, I remember when so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so, you know, and
Exactly.
It's, we gotta help the kids have memories. And right now, the only memories they have is, are bad ones. With, with our town, and that, and this is a great town.
It's worth doing what we're doing, for sure. It's worth being here and doing what we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the important part. Anything else? Anybody wants to add? Tonight, I have to keep it at the hour mark, my lieutenant's here, we went on last night.
I, 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 before we leave,
Yeah.
I just, I would like to know, um, like, maybe just like a, a, a group of like, five people that I can call on and say, I mean, someone's gotta say, hey, I gotta, we gotta make sure that
Kind of something.
and I'm willing to step up there and do a portion of that, but I have a lot of hats.
Yeah.
And, and I, I can't only be the one saying, oh, I'll do this, and I'll do that, I'm just curious, like, is there five people in this room that are willing to say, you call me during the week, and I'll check it off the list for you, and you know, we'll get this done, and we'll get this done?
What are we saying? Do we have it?
I, I'd like just five names of someone I can say, I'll call you, and hopefully you can take care of this one.
Let's put our hands up if we can have Andy's, if you want.
So almost everyone here?
Yeah.
We need someone to give all the information to, someone's gonna be the lead person, I assume, you?
Sure, yeah.
Like if I get a donation, I'll give it to you.
Yeah. And I honestly think, I personally myself, I'm going to go try to get some donations, because
Okay.
if, if you just, I own a business here, I mean, if we, if we just said, you know, hey, would you donate fifty bucks, I would donate fifty bucks tonight.
Yeah.
Um, Hillary, if you owned a business, I know you would, um, I know I'd go see John Weatherby, he'll donate fifty dollars. I'd go see McAllister Steele, I could go see Pleasant Valley Fire.
The worst thing they say is no, and we go on. You don't know unless we ask you, absolutely right.
There's so many, I mean, fifty dollars is not a ton of money to put towards a good cause, I mean-
But it's huge for this, for this cause, though.
Yeah, it's, it's, exactly.
Right, it'll go a long ways for this cause.
It's all that we need, if, if you had ten businesses, that were willing to donate fifty dollars, or there's five hundred, and the town's going to donate five hundred.
Yeah, and now you're there.
We're there.
Even, uh, there's, you know, there's another little, you know, Chris Hunt said this, I, I, I have a trooper detective who asked the hot dog place, I think around Vermont, uh, and I don't think they're from this area, hey, would you be willing to donate a couple boxes of hot dogs? You know, so, don't let it, you know, it, just not in this area, it could be statewide, hey, you know, you know, we sell your hot dogs, or you know, give away your hot dogs, and it's gonna advertise it for you, it's for a good cause and so forth, so that's all I'm saying, just don't let me think.
Yeah, we can reach out, we can go where, where, I mean, we can go to Main Factory right here in, in the state of Vermont and just say, hey, do we have some, you know, some suppliers here?
There are a lot of businesses who are more out to donate what their product is, for this.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know about necessarily in Richard, I mean, I'd donate a gallon of maple syrup, but we're not going to-
Maybe you gotta go to Burlington, or maybe you gotta go to like Colchester, or maybe you gotta go to St. Albans, to a Hannaford or something and say, hey, you know, they, they can say no.
Yeah, Hannaford donated a lot of hot dogs to us for the PTL last year, I don't remember how much, but Evelyn Flurry, um, works there, I don't know if she still does, but she got a bunch.
I took the one in Eastburg, you think her?
Yeah.
I, I honestly think that maybe, uh, cause now Knott's owns the grocery store, I'm, I'm sure that Knott's would
Okay.
would work with, I mean, I'm not, I'm not speaking for him, but
Yeah, it's worth, right, it's worth asking. Right?
So, so Andy, maybe afterwards, we could take a couple minutes and see who, if, if you guys, anybody who's here has a suggestion of who they could go to, maybe we could get a list, so on your way out, just stop in and tell me, say, hey, I'm gonna talk to Pam Persons, who, you know, runs Knott's, and see what she can donate, and, and we can just do that. You can barter, maybe, maybe you have maple syrup, and somebody else will donate something for, you know, you give them maple syrup, they'll give you, you know, barter.
Yeah, it becomes a, you know, it becomes a kind of fun sort of thing, right?
Put a barrel out the front door.
I'll tell you, we know what, like I said earlier, not to beat a dead horse, but you know, Tom Ridge, they found out that all their work took place, you know, not in the meetings, but outside of the meetings, when we're not here, so. Mom, you had a question? That's on your mom, yeah, you raise your hand, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, it's okay, I think I got an answer.
Okay, great.
Going to the stores to ask for the donations and stuff like that, for the meet, I didn't know if we could call Mackenzie and-
That's who it was.
Yeah, Kenzie.
You know.
Yeah, we had a trooper call them, they actually, for whatever event it was, I can't remember what it was, uh, the trooper held it, and they actually donated a couple boxes.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's, I think for sure, we could get the donation, but it's a throw on, so, I'm just, the tongue, the tongue as well, I'm-
No, you, you gotta get something, you can't, you can't lift it all yourself, so the buying's gotta be from the room, and then that will snowball, you know, my, my hope would be that when the numbers become thirty, and thirty-five, and forty, that that, now the responsibility get, now you folks have done it once, you can help the next person and say, hey, this is how I did it, together we can try this, and then the next year, you step away, and that person runs in, they turn it off. That would be the ideal way, right, cause it all would work that way, you know, but definitely wish, how we see it kind of being handed off, so that one day I'm not standing up here, somebody else is, and they're running the show, and it just works as that machine's supposed to work. Right?
One thing I, I see, like, this is a little bit off topic, but being involved with the municipality, and being on the select board and everything, um, obviously, the twenty people that keep coming to this meeting don't have this mentality, but a lot of people just, they don't think it's their problem, or, you know, oh, the community, it is what it is, it's the select board's fault, or it's this one's fault, or that one's fault, and it's like, it's not, it, it's not gonna fix itself unless people are willing to come to a meeting, willing to contribute, willing to, it's, it's gonna take time.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't, they're not patient enough to even, to, you know, realize that, hey, it might take a couple years before-
Change, it's gonna take time, it is, yes.
But, you know, that's why I think if we did something like this, it may show, it may, well, we, we could leave there disappointed, I don't know, maybe the same nineteen or twenty people that are in this room would be the only ones that come to it, but we don't know until we try.
You're absolutely right.
And, and if, if fifty people come, well, that's more people that are in this room, and then maybe the meeting, the Thursday after that, twenty of those people will come to them, I don't know. I just think that people need to think that, right, it's, it's not
I think it is.
the select board's fault, or it's not the, the town's fault, it's, it's, we all live here. I mean, granted, some of the decisions get made, but we're asking for help, otherwise, we wouldn't be doing this.
Absolutely. Anything else anybody wants to add before we close for the night?
Nothing?
This was great. Okay, this is, this is the turning point that needed to develop on its own, we're taking that turn, all right? We'll see what the results of this come out to be, we'll learn from it, and keep, keep driving on. And the next vision will come to light, and we'll figure out how to make that one work. And pretty soon, we'll be into next year, and like you said, we'll take our experiences and make them grow. That's it, that's the way, that's the way it works, so. That's it.
Should we all leave, or telephone numbers or something? If I have to get in touch with Sandy, I can walk down the street, but you know, it's-
No, that's exactly what Tom did, like it had a-
Maybe we're gonna have emails, email them a lot.
Your phone tree, emails?
So on, on, there's a piece of paper right by the door, it has uh, an email sign up, so just, if everyone puts their email on there, Kylie can take that, enter it into the computer in the town, create a linked, you know, town IDP meeting group, or whatever
Yeah.